I could blow over. I thought it was gonna run here.
Yeah, me too. I think he got enough drop or two.
You made a motion. By fellowship. It was.
Well, I'm sorry.
That life. Still called Thomas. And it was a selling.
Correct. I'd have to go back and look at the specific. Burridge.
I know that I had to write a motion. Like these. The whole bill is. Who we rent something out somebody else and they said they need to go build. Now they want to rent something. We can't. But we're gonna sell this money not if I have people ask me trouble buying. Yeah, we gotta wait two more minutes. Do you want to break that? Do you want to break that? No? But you call. Okay. I don't want to break that.
I was telling my group like. It's not the biggest. Number. That we've had in a day. But. It was a healthy, probably one of healthiest number. If that makes sense. Friday, Friday morning. When was that? Skeet shoot. One one hundred regular. Yeah, crush the plate. That was it. That was a good deal. Good shoot. They offered to get a spot with the the Western Sun team. And, uh, man, I really need to be checking in and get some babies over here.
All right, I believe it is six o'clock, so we can call it a meeting to order. And, uh. Ready for road goal and call it order. Do we want? Do that? We're gonna have a public hearing, you guys. It will just take a few minutes. But we wanna do that before we call it the meeting to order. Okay, now we're gonna call it a public hearing to order. And I'm gonna read. What the hearing is all about. And if anybody wants to make any comments, feel free to after I get finished reading it. And then we're gonna keep this part of the meeting open for about thirty minutes. In case somebody comes in late and they wanna make a comment about it, okay? And we'll provide them a opportunity at some time. Okay, the public hearing is. Public hearing in accordance of the Development Corporation Act, section five oh five point one five nine of the Texas Local Government Code. The Sylphy Economic Development Corporation, a type A. Economic Development Corporation on Monday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty five, at six P M. At the Sylphy City Hall. Council Chamber Chambers located at twelve twenty. Highway three twenty seven east in Sylphy, Texas will consider the following projects. Provide financial assistance in the. In an amount not to exceed. Three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars to. Worthy Enterprises LLC for improvements to real property and equipment. As approved by the Sylphy Economic Development Corporation's. Board of Directors promote or expand business development. It is requested that you make your views known either in person or by writing. To the Sylphy Economic Development Corporation. And at this time, I would allow anybody that wants to make any comments. About this to come to the. Speaker and make comments. Give them a minute here for anybody that wants to do that. Okay. In case. What we're gonna do then is we are going to, uh. We're not gonna adjourn this this public hearing, but we're gonna.
Move forward.
We're gonna move forward and we're gonna keep it open for thirty minutes. And at the end of thirty minutes, I'll come back and ask if anybody else has any comment. Okay? All right, so now then. We're gonna move into the, uh.
City council meeting.
City council meeting. Cause we can't.
Can't vote on this thing, the E D C stuff yet.
That's what I I thought that was right, but I wasn't sure. Okay. Okay, now then we'll call a council meeting to order.
Council member Tina Holden.
Yeah.
Council member Paul Davis.
Here.
Council member Bruce K. Mayor Danny Renaud.
Here.
Council member Thomas Todd.
Here.
Council member Kurt Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Prince Tim Williams.
Here.
Okay, that was a stand for the pledge and. And Paul's gonna give us an invocation after the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we come to unite, thankful for everything you bless us with. Please give this council the wisdom that we need. Make good decisions for the city. Uh, please take care of all of us, everyone that's in attendance tonight and their families. Mentally, spiritually, and physically, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. That's a solid question.
Can we can we have to open open like that?
We suspended, we suspended the public hearing. He suspended the public hearing. We'll we'll go back to it.
We gotta give them a little chance in case somebody came in. Okay? We're ready for the hearing of visitors. And. Did anybody not sign up, not get a? Thank for to sign up? I apologize because the last meeting I didn't. I never saw the paper. And so we didn't call everybody. Kathy, would you like to be the first to get up to speak?
Wow. That's smart. I work in each of management services. I really just wanted to come thank the city for allowing us to turn in a proposal. Appreciate that, and I just felt like ours maybe was misinterpreted and for the bulk audience and. If I was given opportunity to explain, I'd like to have that. And I wanted to let you know I brought a couple of guys, it would be James Time, Jordan Sermons. They both worked for me for five years. They also were with me at Piney Woods. They did the routes for the city of Sylphy for the dumpsters. And the residential, so they both know those routes. Just wanted to tell you that information. And I wanna let the city know we're prepared and we're ready to. Get the necessary equipment, anything we need to do, and if anything comes our way. And we are here if the city needs us now and down the road, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Can I do that for you?
Yes, sir.
Uh, owned in trucks. Are you having two people on the back of the truck?
Yes, sir. Again, whatever we need to do, I was. Thinking of doing a few different things, so we can talk about that. If we have an opportunity, I'd like to talk about that.
Is that what y'all be y'all be in project?
Yes, sir.
We really can't ask questions in public in the hearing visitors. We can't ask questions on hearing visitors.
Okay, hold on a second. If we can't do it there, then when we get that line out, we got a right to ask that question to that person.
We can do it. We can do it at the line item. If it's if that's a line item.
Well, we'd be proud of being best of y'all to speak.
Well, we've got at least one more to speak. Do you want them to wait in the line item? We can have a.
That's up to them. They wanna speak. I could just ask questions right after when we get the line out.
Good. Sunny, would you like to?
Well, I requested to do it during the agenda.
Okay, you wanna do it.
I can do that. I requested it so that they could be questions asked. See if we can't make sure that everybody.
All right. And did you wanna speak tonight? You didn't sign one up.
I did.
No. Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have it. But would you wanna speak? What was it? We get to that line item or? Okay.
Uh, Dan. We we gotta have something set up. Let me ask you a question. When people sign up back at the back. Before we start our meeting. Would that be in the problem? Y'all have picked those up to make sure they're back there?
But if they read it, it tells them to bring it up here and turn it in.
What it doesn't turn in at?
They they supposed to give it. It says give it to me, but a lot of people walk on to give it to the mayor.
Now, if they say give it to you, what do they give it to you? Where's where what you say right here? I don't have my glasses.
But if they don't turn them in, we don't have them.
That's what happened last week. Nobody turned them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. What is they on the bottom? Who who does it read saying give it to them? We just gotta make sure we got a a plan in the world. After, you know, before you ever meet, start with no thought we're doing. I mean, where is it on this phone?
I don't know. I don't have a phone in front of me.
I I'm gonna go on here. Give it to you, but I don't see it. I'm sorry.
The first line item said those wishes be must complete this form and send it to the city secretary prior to the beginning of the meeting. And so the mayor normally asks me if I have them, and I say yes or no, I don't have any. And I think in this last meeting, the mayor forgot to ask me if I had any, but I didn't have any.
Hey, there's a fun question. Who's who's the city secretary?
Who's the?
You're the city secretary?
I'm the city secretary. She's.
Okay, well, it's the city manager right there. So somebody that's never been here before, they come in here. Does it say manager or secretary? I don't have my glasses on either.
Okay.
On that nameplate. I'm just saying if it says city secretary, we need to clarify so that they know where it goes.
Do we have any other visitors that won't speak? Cause anybody, you don't have to sign up to speak right here. Is there any other visitors that want to speak? Okay. Okay, discussion and possible action on approving the expenditures for the month of August twenty twenty five.
Want to wait? Mike didn't wanna talk.
Believe it says you wait until the line item. They're both young.
It says, yeah, it's on the I don't know before. Okay.
Dan, is there anything unusual or new on here that's. Got a new tel stuff at translation jack.
They have to buy material. Page three, they got some materials from. Ford main, and they got some. Badger meter. And you got your residential commercial down at the bottom. Um. On page two, I think you got a. Uh, basketball court reserves and seventeen.
Which, uh, where'd that go?
That's Waldau and Twenty First Street.
That's a Volvo. So what's the pro playgrounds? Is that the, uh, New Gold or something?
What now?
Right above it carousel freight pro.
That's a that's a carousel for the for was going on Twenty First Street, but going on Ninth Street, coming in way too small. At the budget of.
I got you. So they moved that from Twenty First Street to Ninth Street?
Yeah, because the size of Ninth Street Park has smaller kids that came in way too small.
Then what do you move back to Twenty First from the place?
I'm working on researching it right now, researching something, putting in place of.
What about Smear for Brown? We don't find any liabilities about there?
Can't find a large. I can't find a large like that one right there. It's probably four foot across, real small.
What was the liability y'all gonna check on though?
Well, the smaller one, there's.
Any of them?
Any of them that they say they're fine, the C M L says they're fine.
Anything else on this?
No, I just got the other big ticket out. Everything else is like everything else.
Make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion on it? All in favor? Both? Discussion and act and possible action on approving the minutes from August seventh meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from August seventh, twenty five meet.
We have a motion in a second. Are you in discussion on that? All in favor? Both? Did that carry? Okay, we have, uh. For consent agenda items, these are items that we've already voted to do, and we've already, in most instances, done them, and now we gotta vote to pay the bill on them. Does anybody wanna separate any one of them out, or can we vote on them all at once?
You have to read them all.
I'm gonna read it. Okay. Discussion and possible action on approving pay request number six in the amount of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. The Gulf Coast Electric Company, Inc., for the critical infrastructure generator C D B G dash M I T H M G P supplemental G L O project. Generator. Item two, discussion and possible action on approving pay request number one in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents to Experts Underground Solutions LLC for the twenty twenty-three T X C D B G sewer improvement project. Pine shadows. Item three, discussion and possible action on approving pay request number two in the amount of ninety thousand, thirty dollars and sixty cents to the Expert Underground Solutions LLC for the twenty twenty-three T X. C D B G sewer improvement project pine shadows. Item four. Discussion and possible action on approving invoice number two five zero six oh two five in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred from Lead Levens Engineering and Design LLC for the engineering services rendered for the twenty twenty-three T X C D B G sewer improvement project in pine shadows. Is it okay to vote on all at once?
Now, since you see anything line of pine shadows. One, two, three, three of them were three of the four. Did you have any questions about that?
Well, the way they got it. Got on his sheet, still ain't telling me. What took place and how it took place with the missing sheet on it. So you blanked.
Be a breakdown.
Tells you, but I understand what you're saying. It doesn't. Tell you where all that went, where all that happened.
He said.
Except for I got a map.
May I? Yeah, I think I can help explain that. Uh, so with our individual, the items number two and three, those pay requests from the contractor. We approved those. We sent them to you all this time as a request with a map attached to the backside of that pay request that showed the work that was being done. Um, I'm not sure if y'all have that in your packet. I do have a single copy here. I put something with that. I'm with Levens Engineering and Design. Sorry. My name is Stephen Witz. Um, and this is for, I'm speaking particular to the two pay requests from the contractors. For pine shadows. Each time we submit those now with you guys, we've got a map attached to the back highlighted with the force of the work that's being done.
I I get one of the questions I knew that is that. When you go on a crosswalk sidewalk. On the opposite end of, I can see on the side where the pipes you be going down to the state. But on the opposite side of the highway. Who was talking before it wants to cross that sidewalk?
Highway, you mean you mean up the road?
I say road road, I say sidewalk.
No, I understand. You're talking about particular to pine shadows?
Yeah, you I give you frame down.
Yeah.
When you go straight down that road, straight down, highway down. When you just when you make that curve. There is work that was done done over past the sidewalk.
On the backside?
Yeah.
That's probably, I'm not a hundred percent certain, so don't don't let me lie to you, but I'll imagine that had to do with that service line that was coming from that building. And where they had to access that from.
I understand it. But I'm trying to see why are we responsible for to cross that line when it's not what what it wasn't part of the.
I don't think that you're necessarily responsible for except that you have to tie tie it back in, and that was the only logical place that they could have tied their service line.
Okay, we bust y'all bust concrete up to do that.
Uh, well, so I heard about that. I'm not understanding. First of all, this isn't my project, but I did hear that they had some damage and that all the damage is in repair at this time.
Well, my point is is how do they get damaged? And 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 who pays for that?
Uh, the contractor had to pay for that. Outside of any of that is not included.
You should have, it wasn't included in the work.
The cost to do the repair is not included in the dollars that you're seeing right now.
Man, I haven't looked at that paper for.
Absolutely. It's it's broken down by line item. It's broken down by line item, shows you exactly what you're paying for. It's same as the bid, same as the bids.
Not only not only did I found one like that, I found about.
Probably three or four. There's three or four. I have a couple of pictures of where.
I've got there.
Yeah, I got. But that's not, no, sir, that was that's the sole we're fine. Any damage done that's outside of the scope of work done by the contractor, it's just sole we're fine.
On any contract.
You're not paying for that. I wouldn't allow any, even if it was.
I guess you need to.
Uh, you wanna sit right now?
No, I'll sit later.
Okay, absolutely. That's standard practice with any of these projects, but get any damage that they do, absolutely.
I mean, I'm okay with everything else. In the easement code, you know, back. You know, the easement was the city's responsibility.
Yeah.
Anything past the sidewalk was the property's responsibility.
Yeah, so and you're right to that degree, but at the same time, if the contractor goes out there and damages anything. Whether it's yours, a private citizen's, anything in our contracted or your contract that we we created. It is the contractor's responsibility to repair it.
Any damage. Okay, now let me ask you another question. You gonna sit like that?
Okay.
If it was part of a tie in that was going to a certain spot. That you had to tie that concrete up. Who pays for that?
If it was required in the easement, something that we saw for solve from the beginning that needed the concrete had to be removed, then yes, it would be part of the design package. Remove the contract.
That's what that's what I'm like there.
It it's very possible that they had to remove concrete for the project at their own.
And I'm not trying to dispute that. I just like to see it. If if it's telling me that 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 issue that that company pays for that. With the with the design, I'm seeing out there and the way the work perform, I'm having a hard time believing that.
I can get you. Let me get you some more. Let me talk with Ted when I get back. We can we can have a conversation. I I think that'd be fine. But I don't think I do not think that you're paying for. I know for a fact, number one. That the line item shown. Or that's all that's all the work that we've done is for manholes and pipe works. Yeah, and your silver tiles. You're not paying for anything.
I mean, that's all that's all I'm concerned about because.
For sure.
I know if it was on. Past the sidewalk or that we never should have been responsible for.
I agree.
Even if even if you was tying it in past that sidewalk, we still should be responsible for it.
I would agree with that. I mean. But again, I don't know exactly what instance you're talking to, but. Be perfectly happy to have an additional conversation.
And I mean, I'm not looking at you for what I'm done. I leave the contractors out there doing the work and.
Yeah, it's a legitimate question. Yeah, I understand. All right, yeah, thank you. Any other questions? And then the last one was 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 not for the contractor. That was for our.
Yeah, I make a motion that we pay my bills. Uh, we approve pay request one, two, three, and four.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion of? All in favor? Both? Okay, that's done. Ms. Sherman, I don't wanna skip around, but. Usually we have like for city manager's report and a and a. Public work director's report.
We do, but Roger didn't turn nothing in to me, and I didn't have anything this month. Sometimes we all have nothing to report other than ordinary agenda stuff.
We've got some line items. That's why I didn't do it. We got line items.
Yeah, there's several lines.
I just didn't wanna let it get out of hand before.
Well, that's just for us to talk and and these other ones, most of the things that he and I both had needed action. So we put them in action out.
Okay. All right. Okay, I now we're into the items to be considered. These are new items. Item one, discussion and possible action on resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-one. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sylphy, Texas authorizing the donation of the nineteen ninety-two Sparkle Fire Truck to the Harden County Emergency Services District seven. Making findings of the fact and providing. In the in the in effective date, Councilman Tyler, would you tell us about this?
Well, I had to hear from the attorney, the attorney. Oh, he gets back here. Yeah, come on up, Kurt.
Yeah, I talked to him.
Uh, we had a fire truck once before that we had here. We'd have donated to vote off. Uh, fire district back back then. And this one came up too, and Kurt and I spoke about it, so I felt like I told him we was bringing it forward to council. And see what we can do with this one here because they got good use for it and that. And some of the things probably wrong with it, they got good mechanics, so they fixed it and get it back running.
Yes, and as we've discussed, um, there's a definite need right now, um, for our E S D. Uh, we don't have a service provider. The fire department, uh, will not sign a contract. Uh, to provide some of the services. Uh, to the district, so we're looking and establishing our own fire department within the the E S D. Uh, and we're soliciting for volunteers over the course of the next few weeks. And build up. We gotta, we'll have to go through the appointment of our, uh, fire chief. And, uh, very, very seasoned veteran project. And we'll start building our programs, our training. And this, uh, piece of equipment is gonna help us immensely in the district.
Are you the president of V S D seven?
Yes, sir.
Clarifying. Yes, I wasn't listening very well.
I'm sorry about that.
No, not.
I should have stated that earlier.
No, you're good.
I think we better make a motion that we appoint a fire truck. I think we have to make a motion that we appoint a fire truck.
Wait a second.
Okay. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, Kurt, the other thing we need you to do is get with the city manager, so y'all can get the tile and everything changed over.
Yes, sir.
I had this contact in.
Okay, okay.
So you.
Yeah, we spoke, I spoke to you on.
Yes, ma'am. I, I just, just call me. Um, if I need to swing by, you just tell me, and I'll swing by and we'll take care of all of that and go straight to the, uh. We're getting a quote on the insurance, so as soon as it leaves, it's rolled out, it's in our name, we're gonna, it's gonna be insured, uh, and everything happens, so.
Tom, should I get your picture cut or?
No.
Thank you, guys. Really do appreciate it.
I'm impressed, yeah, I appreciate it.
Good luck, you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Yes, sir.
Yeah, item two, discussion of possible action to approve change order number four in the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred dollars for the critical infrastructure generator CDBG MIT HMGP supplemental GLO project. Upgrade of electrical at Avenue Iowa site and public works office located at five ninety North Sixth Street.
Generator, put it on me? Oh, God.
Another generator.
Okay.
You don't have to give us, you don't have to.
This ain't change order for generators.
Well, this, this is all because energy will not hook the power back up unless we upgrade it, upgrade the power at both buildings. Like, when they, when they disconnect the power, they disconnect the power like the Avenue Iowa.
Hell, I don't know that. You know, like, I mean, I, I'll be honest.
This is something that the engineers, nobody ever looked at.
I'm talking, I'm talking as a whole.
Yeah.
Change orders is crap, they should have known upfront.
Well, that, we didn't know energy would not reconnect the service because of the wiring. We didn't, nobody, nobody, engineers or anybody didn't look at it, just like at North Sixth Street. When they pull the panel out, the meter panel out, there's two hot wires stuck up in there. We didn't, they couldn't see that. It's not the, it's not the engineer's fault. This, this is energy telling us either upgrade or don't connect, put the power back on.
So when did, was this in, when was it disconnected?
Uh, we disconnected Avenue I, I think about three weeks ago, and got, got everything going.
No, okay, is this, or?
It's fifteen thousand to do both of them.
I'm talking about the one on, on Sixth Street.
We haven't done anything on Sixth Street. They're telling us we disconnected. Yeah, we got a new generator, but nothing, done anything to it yet, because they're telling us. They disconnect that, we got to upgrade that place. Energy, energy, it's all good, energy.
Energy is telling you that they can't do something because of what?
They have to, we have to upgrade the service going into the building.
Okay, so how, how's, how, how do you know when anybody not know this, I guess, you know what I'm saying?
Well, they thought there was a.
Well, it's a new, it's a new generator. What it sounds like, something from, it sounds like it's a new generator.
Sure.
That we just got, and the building's not equipped to handle to be plugged into right away.
So they, so when they come out and do the generator quote, they one hundred percent can figure that out and know that. I quoted generators, I know for a fact.
Well, they want everything transferred to CTs, is what they want everything transferred to, CTs.
And it's fine, you're able to figure that stuff out prior to.
Yeah, the energy didn't tell us.
Like, you use the quotes for that. You come out there, you figure out what phase you're gonna need, all the things. Generator, you know all that stuff right front.
And we got these generators out?
Through the grant.
Right, it was a grant.
Yeah. The grant's paying for it, the city's not paying.
The grant paid for the generator, right. And so I guess, did the, was, was the destination determined before?
LJA.
Yeah. Hey, we have a new deal going tonight where newspaper and, and Johnny Marvel with. With his production company, they are broadcasting live our meeting, so could you state your name and who you work for?
My name is Cody Crowley, I'm with LJA Engineering. Well, I've got a letter here from the electrical engineer and designer. And what he, what he's explaining why this, what has happened is this is at the office building side. The building has two electrical services on the outside back wall that require modifications to eliminate splices in the meter enclosures that are not allowed by twenty eighteen energy installation standards. So this is something, he's explaining that, this is something that was inside the meter connection that wasn't part of our scope, we wouldn't have looked at that. So when energy came out there to rip this up.
I hear you, sir. I literally did that job, and I don't believe that. You know what I'm saying? Like every single, and I'm not saying I don't believe you, or, but, but I did the job. Like, I, when you go out and you do a quote, you, you literally know that, and you don't know it, you call energy and find out. So you can give an accurate quote to those people, so you're not coming back with change orders for tree kidding. Fifteen thousand two hundred dollars, or people tax payer money. Issue I have. So why is that not being done? You, when your engineer goes out and does a quote, and they see that this, this meter on this, they, they don't know what's behind it. And all of a sudden, boom, they opens up, oh, we can't do this, this, that. Why don't they call energy during their quote process and figure that out?
I didn't know, I could, I could relay that message.
Okay.
All right, so, uh.
I make a motion, we do not approve this change order.
I do, uh, I don't, you know, whether it affects your decision or not. The project manager couldn't be here tonight, again, I'm pulling this for him, so I'll leave it to the information. He told me that the grant administrator said this project needs to be closed out. Certificate of construction completion submitted everything by mid-September. So. We're kind of on our deadline here.
I guess y'all better figure out where you'll find fifteen thousand two hundred dollars on.
So I was just saying that, uh, I think. Well, correct me if I'm wrong, you had already found another contractor, electrical contractor to do this.
Avenue Iowa.
Oh, that was Avenue Iowa?
We reach out, Avenue Iowa, Avenue Iowa, the price we got is seven thousand five hundred dollars for them to do it.
That's four thousand dollar sheet.
No, that's, excuse me, that's one.
That's two. You talked to fifteen, it's for two, that's for both buildings. You should have item my statement, you know, it's back there.
Takes me off, what takes me off is you put us in a rock and hard place now, right?
I, I understand completely. I told them after I came here last time, I said, y'all, at the next meeting, we have to have Jeff Kyler, the electrical engineer, run a city council. And I was told today, he's out of town this meeting. So I, I fully understand your concerns, I'm just not qualified or not able enough to answer them.
It's true, please don't take me the wrong way, because I know it's not specifically you, okay? Talking to your company is the whole, because your representatives has to take the part.
I'm gonna second your motion.
Well, I, I guess, and, and you know, based on what Kurt's saying, and you got a guy, especially what you tell the guy to make sure he's up here for the next meeting, but he decided not to be here.
Well, I, Mr. Tyler.
Yeah.
I told the project manager, Jeff Scotten, and he was supposed to relay that information to his sub, Jeff Kyler, the electrical engineer. I don't speak to Jeff Kyler, I'm not part of this project, so I just gave y'all's information back to the project manager, said, like, the season happened about the change orders. They want to speak to the actual design engineer, the designees, that's not somebody with our company, that's somebody we sub to. I said, they want to speak to him, get him there at the next council meeting.
See, and I understand that, but, but what I'm saying, by the fact that you explained it to them, and they're not here, and now they're telling you to make sure we understand the old timeframe, to me, it don't sound like it was that important to them, because they had it, they'd been there explaining.
I can't disagree with him.
I mean, I don't care, we'll go back to another meeting later, but I, I mean, I think somebody needed, they weren't in explanation, I think Kurt lost about a quarter.
I have a motion.
What is this, did I, you started about?
Well, the project, it, uh, you know, this is the same, uh, pay request that was part of consent to the item, I believe. The project is nearly complete, you know, it's probably ninety-five per, percent complete or, or more, so it's grant funded. So we found out recently, uh, made it in the day, last week, I don't remember, uh, the project manager explained to me that he thought he had longer to get close-up documents to the grant administrator. She said, no, I really need them by early September.
Honestly, that sounds like a him problem.
And he said, he said, well, I think, he goes, we couldn't even get city council, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is your next, is September, is it on September fifteenth? Is that a Monday? He was projecting when y'all could even have another city council to accept the project as complete. And he said it would be after that, and the grant administrator said, okay, that would be fine. So we need to have the project closed out, uh, and say that you're, you're a hundred percent accepting the project by then. So if you don't, if you don't, obviously you're not gonna, if you don't want to approve the change order tonight, I think it, it probably will require another meeting to get that engineer here, answer some questions, and determine if the city wants to have the grants paid for it or not.
Okay, I, I don't care if we have, I don't care if we have another special call meeting, the city council, as long as the guy come here and answer the question Kurt got turned about. Because he asked about it.
Oh, I think these are perfectly valid concerns.
Yeah. Uh, we got a motion second to take.
We got a motion in second, is there any further discussion on it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That's in favor of?
The motion, no.
The motion does not pass.
Not pass until they can come back before it with information.
Anyone opposed? All of opposed? Okay, the motion is passed, that they do not, uh, approve this request.
No, respectfully, if your boss wants to, thinks it's disimportant, he can ask, just, we can come to special meetings, listen to them out.
Now, if, if any date gonna be final, come y'all, uh, next, first, first of March, uh, uh, in next week sometime, do you set the meeting up?
I'm gonna be gone a little bit next week, but you guys can have that meeting without me, that'd be fine. I'm gonna be gone Thursday through Monday.
All right, well, make sure, yeah, if we do the meeting, make sure it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, next week, the mayor will be back.
So I, I, it seems like y'all didn't approve it, that you didn't table it either, so could we resubmit it at a special call meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, we, yeah.
We just voted to not pay it.
Okay, well, I, Jeff Scotten worked with Roger when y'all, if, if we go on a special meeting to discuss this then, and we'll try our best to.
Well, he, he worked with Deanne, she won't mind scheduling.
Well, I think the project manager generally deals with public works management, but between, uh, Deanne and Roger, we'll make sure that we're aware of the special call meeting and that our sub is there to address it.
I want to make one other point before we leave this. Now, this is a grant, and it's being paid for by, through the grant, anyway, it's not the city paying the fifteen thousand two.
No, it's, and it, it's grant funded, and again.
Where do y'all think grant money come from?
I know, I know, but.
No, and it's, it's not money, because the, the deadline's coming up, you wouldn't be able to use the money anywhere else, so you don't use it, it's just gonna be sent back to the state anyway. But, uh, I think y'all made a good point before, I mean, let's just say this was earlier in the project, you know, you have valid concerns, you know, you don't want to use grant money for change orders that you feel like it's someone else's fault, you know, that might be potential.
It would just be a nice dollar upfront.
Yeah, potentially used for something further down the line, or a completely unknown, you know, uh, issue that would arise during construction.
If it was a one-time, first-time thing, too, that'd be a different story.
All right, thank you for coming, I hope we weren't too hard on you. Okay. Item three, discussion and possible action on amending lease agreement between the City of Sylphy and Life Matters World Ministries, Inc., for the property located at five ninety North Sixth Street in Sylphy, Texas.
Uh, I had a meeting with, um, Reverend Tyler, and he asked me, he wasn't able to come tonight, but he asked me to address it for him. Um, the contract actually was, uh, from June first to May thirty-first. And he said he didn't move in till July, so he wanted to know if y'all be willing to change the date in the contract. Instead of saying beginning June first to say beginning July first. And then he said that it worked in the contract, that he's responsible for the maintenance on the building. And he said the building was very old, and he doesn't feel like that he should have to. He wants you to take the clause out that says he's responsible for the maintenance of the building.
He said.
How much did he pay rent for that building?
Well, it was a dollar a year, and then y'all just voted it in, and he agreed five hundred dollars a month.
So didn't, but who handled the maintenance laws, that he's paying a dollar?
The, the contract didn't change at all.
The contract didn't change, so he's handled the maintenance whenever it was a dollar a year, or whatever?
It, no, the contract didn't change, he didn't handle the maintenance, but the obligation has been there.
So who ma, who paid for the maintenance, or was there any ma, was there any maintenance? That's the first question.
I think we did.
And the city did.
But the contract reads that he's responsible for, and that's what he wants you to do, is say, you want to be willing to take that word in mouth.
He also wants the, or at least the last thing I heard, he wants the ability to sublease as well. Did he change that?
To, to do what now?
To sublease.
Oh, well, he told me not to address that.
Okay, all right.
I wish you were here, uh, so we could.
I'm not gonna lie, I feel like we should table this until.
He's had, he had health issues, and he wasn't able to come.
No, I understand, that's why, I'm just saying, it would be nice if you were here so we could schedule it to you.
Do we have a motion to table this? Is there a second?
I second it.
Is a motion in a second? Is there any discussion on it? All in favor of tableing it?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's try that again. Well, okay, I understand. Would everybody that's in favor of tableing it, raise your hand? Okay.
Four.
I just heard two more, that's wild. Okay, all right, so the motion is tabled. Discussion and possible action on, on award of sanitation contract for the City of Sylphy. Now, I'm gonna turn this over to city manager lead this discussion, but do you want those people to come up here and speak before you start, or are you on?
Well, I mean, there's nothing, I, I worded it that way based on what your RFP said. And, you know, because tonight was the night for you to award, but I think what y'all wanted to do is let them all speak.
Three.
I don't know how many of them asked to speak. I don't know if all three did or not. I, I don't have a form.
I've got three requests.
Okay, I guess you let them speak.
Well, let's start with Mike. You want to speak first?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a long history with the town, probably eleven years out of the last seventeen. Um, done a lot of things at the city, uh, with several, with a couple of different companies. Um, tonight I'm here on behalf of Frontier Way Solutions. The first thing I want to say is, we don't have any problems with the way the bid was done, we don't have any problems with the way it was presented. I'm just here to defend how we put our bid together. Okay, so we're not challenging your decision or anything crazy like that. But what I do want you to consider is, is that on the bulk pickup in Sylsby, the residents have in the past been able to put out bulk items beside the cart, whether it be a cardboard box, or whether it be a bench, or, or, you know, whatever, small piece of furniture, mattress. And for the most part, the collections in the past is that went away, okay? That went away as part of the contract. And when we bid, and our price, you know, there again, if you look at the bids and the pricing and everything else, I'm guessing that there's an à la carte version, which means we're gonna pick up the trash, and then we're gonna bill separately for the bulk items. And, and, and will that get you the ultimate cheapest price? I, I agree. Does get an ultimate low bill, but the challenge is the logistics of that. And what I want you guys to understand as you make this decision is, is that if people are paying à la carte on the bulk item, that means, and, and everybody knows your neighbors, they're, they were gonna put their trash out. Did they make a call to the trash company before they put the trash out? No, they just put their trash out, and then it doesn't go away. And then the first calls to the city, hey, they didn't get my bulk items, okay? And then the city says, well, you need to call the trash company and make arrangements to pay for that. And there again, depending on what the rate is and everything else, you know, I would imagine most folks use the bulk two, three times a year. And there again, if you look at the pricing that you have, that's about the difference between us and our competitors on the bid. It's all sixty bucks a year. Um, so I want, I want you guys to consider that. I want you to consider, you know, size and everything else. I mean, we've got four districts with thirty-plus trucks, you know, within ninety miles of the place. Uh, I think you remember. Uh, I think you remember, um, I think I was here with Ike, I know I was here with Harvey. And your city had one of the, you were one of the first cities to get ready to go to trash service after Harvey. I mean, honestly, there was nobody else that got serviced before, there was other cities that sat for a couple of weeks. Um, so, I'm pretty sure, you got a big decision, you got a, a number of great proposals, there again, I'm not contesting or complaining or anything else about how it is, but when you negotiate your contract with the next provider, at least keep that in mind. Cause that is, the logistics of your bulk is going to be a challenge if it is à la carte. With that said, I appreciate your time and I appreciate the history of the town, thanks.
And that is Mr. Mike Wilson. Okay?
We're allowed to ask any questions.
Yeah.
Yes. He can, he can.
You can?
He can.
Oh, he can. Mike, you have somebody that's geared up and ready to take over a route here in town that already knows the route?
Okay, full disclosure, we do have a route that's running in Beaumont now. And we do have, uh, well, two of the gentlemen have picked up Silsby for a number of years, but one gentleman in particular lives in the west side of town, has been picking up your trash for close to twenty years. Uh, where he's fully employed, we got him on because of the experience with the city of Silsby in anticipation if we have the opportunity to serve your city. Is he gonna lose his job if we don't get the bid? No. But we are more incapable of knowing the routes and have a guy that's capable of training in driver to get through your route and get it done in a, in a particular fashion. And get it done the way the city of Silsby issues.
With rear loader trucks, the two guys on the back, one driving, one behind the wheel. And, so, I don't, I think I don't, I just wanna know. As an example, you go by, it, with bulk, bulk items are interesting right now. Um, somebody puts out a queen size mattress out by the road on Tuesday, and Tuesday's your normal pickup day. How's that work? What happens?
Well, okay, with our proposal, two bulk items, so basically a mattress and a trash can. Or, and a trash can's a bad idea, cause we use carts in the ci, in the city, but a trash can sized item, technically those two items need to go away. So our proposal, at the rate it's at, is to make sure that everybody's house, that goes away in a given day. Now, with that said, full disclosure, you, you, I mean, you got every situation in the world with twenty four hundred homes in town. You're gonna have a situation where, hey, there's a move out, you know, you have a rental house and somebody moved out and there's ten yards of crap at the curb.
Right.
Uh, that, that is not to cover the ten yards of, of curb, excuse my language, but it is to get the two all items per week. And there again, it just magically everywhere goes away, nobody has to incur a separate bill, nobody has to make a call previous or post collection because it's supposed to go away that day. And there again, I, Nick, who has been learning from me for the past year and a half, and I, I talk to almost daily now. That's the way we operate our, our collection in, in the rural area and on the beach. And, um, you know, that's the way we operate Dayton, if, if you listen to Liberty or Dayton, that's the way we pick up.
I'll tell you, I spoke to a lady in Pearland and man, she loves you guys. Like, she went on and on, she almost didn't, she, I had to tell her, I got another call coming in.
That, that contract was four hundred thousand homes. It, uh, literally was one of the largest transitions in the United States in the last ten years. And the crew, you know, the experience with this company is amazing. They did an amazing job pulling that off over a short period of time, about a year's time. And, uh, we continue to this day, I think we just re-signed them this year.
Good for you. Um, yeah, I don't, uh, anybody else got any questions?
We're ready. Uh, Sonny Hubbard would be the next speaker?
At my age, I'm proud to see y'all again. Just something I had to tell you, my wife and I both are seventy six and we just had our fifty seventh anniversary yesterday. So if I feel a little wobbly or something, go get the oxygen bottle or a glass of water or something. We had a good fifty seventh anniversary, but, uh, we're proud of that. My wife has been a garbage wife her whole life, we spent our honeymoon here in a garbage truck. I've been doing this for fifty five years full time, I probably did it another ten years prior to that while I was growing up. There are things that, uh, I've seen probably five hundred contracts in my life, I probably dealt with two hundred of them. And almost all of them are identical. There's only one way to pick up garbage and that's to pick it up going back of truck. You get into a few little things that change here, change there and everything. I'd like to address a couple of cons, misconceptions we had on our bulk pickup on our last meeting. In our contract, in our proposal, if it's out there, we're gonna pick it up if we can handle it. Every contract on bulk pickup says it has to be tied or bundled or canned or bagged so that the guys can handle it. Nobody is gonna write a contract where you have a pile of brush and you're gonna pick it up, it just does not work. It'll specify cut four feet length less than fifty pounds and tied so they can handle it. Everything is like that, nothing changes. In our contract, if it's out, we'll pick it up if it'll fit in the truck. I'm gonna say that the truck, there are a few things like a mattress, uh, when you fill up a garbage truck, you have so much room in the truck, you take it to the landfill, put it in the landfill. Start picking two, three or four mattresses in the load, it messes up the whole load, so we are gonna come by and pick up the big stuff special. Simply because it's just a logistical problem. And the mattresses, the ice boxes, this sort of thing, you know, they're kinda special, not every time, not every week, cause everybody will weigh a two or three hundred pound icebox and a king size mattress or something, so we will come by and get it, that's not a problem, that is part of the contract. So, you know, for some of the comments before, we wouldn't do that or didn't do that, wasn't the contract, were just not true, because it is under contract that we feel to do that. Everybody in this business does that, it's nothing that one company does that the other company doesn't do. Piney Woods has been here for a long time, two and a half years ago, they sold a lot of oak. The workers that own Piney Woods just ran out of people. The man started, he got Alzheimer's and he eventually passed. One brother, I was with the company seven years, I never met him in seven years because he could not travel. Two grandsons graduated college and they left, they didn't want that deal. And the man that owned it said, I've been doing this twenty eight years and I'm tired, so he's still with the business. Good man, that's what happened, Lavo took over two and a half years ago. So we had our problem just for some key people in the company left. And it caused some real problems for us to be able to overcome what they have accomplished. But, uh, we've got it now, we got an introduction, Nathan Perro, he's the manager, I'm gonna introduce Shane Taylor. He's one of the vice presidents over the region. So, you know, we have this under control now, I think over the last year or so, something like that, we have had good service, Nathan's making sure that it's been taken care of. Lavo has an office here. We're here, we've been here for a long time. We have, we have between fifty five and sixty people that live here, work for us. Uh, if we can buy it, we buy it here. Get the fuel and, and we are able to get it here, we get it here, tires, anything that we can buy from vendors that are local, we're not local. Our office is here, it's been here. We've got containers out, we've got the carts out, we're gonna do everything we can to continue to give the service that, that we have been given. I think Nathan has done a good job, I think that, uh, Shane has done a good job on his end. Nathan has a boss that comes and goes, he is one of the vice presidents of the company. Nathan and Steve Slater both are retired military, they're very disciplined. Nathan's a retired police officer, he's extremely disciplined. If he says he's gonna do it, he's gonna do it. Uh, and I think that, you know, the last time that he's been here for the last six, seven months, I think you've seen a tremendous increase in our service. Didn't we suck wind two years ago? Yeah, we did. But we've overcome that and I think that you'll see, everything is supposed to be going like it's supposed to. Uh, we've got some containers ordered for the sedge people, uh, you know, and again, we're here. Uh, all of our people live in this area. So, you know, we would sure like to keep the contract, rate's good. Give you an example of, of one thing that I think about personally in my, in my position within the company is Matt goes out two tires. First of the bid, to dispose of two tires, you know what that means? We have to haul a house free all month to pay for what it is rid of the tires for. A mattress, uh, we have gotten three or four of those that started charging us for mattresses. It could charge anywhere between what it would cost us to haul three houses and six houses for a month free to get rid of that mattress. So, you know, these are things we look at, that y'all really don't have any kind of libel or any web, knowing exactly how we do this. But we're gonna give the service, it's in the contract, we're gonna do exactly what we say and we're gonna do it to the best of our ability. And we have, Nathan's gonna take care of it for us. So, any ideal, any questions, anything, just let me know, yes?
So your, your bulk, if I'm not mistaken, I have it in front of me, it's thirty five dollars, right?
I'm sorry.
Thirty two dollars?
Thirty five, I'm, let's try it, I'm page, it's on page eleven. Bulk items with thirty five dollars a piece, except for tractor, trailer, farm equipment, tires are sixty. With that total understanding.
They're pretty expensive and the things that are priced, of the extremely large things that they charge us to get rid of. Uh, you know, whenever you're eleven dollars a month. You have a hundred fifty dollars worth of stuff, that's where it is. Stuff that, like refrigerators, freezers, they have to be stamped.
Right. Yeah.
Free on out of, Shane also mentioned bringing.
So specifically Shane Taylor with Lavo, I'm sorry, uh, specifically with the, with the bulk items, I believe at the top of the page. Uh, the way I described is, is somebody described it to you that same way, if we can get it in a truck, there's no extra charge for that. It's just those, those couple of line items underneath that for the larger items.
Mattress or box, bring a refrigerator.
Yeah, or anything else that can get it in the truck, I think it is, you know, small tables and chairs, bundles, I don't even think we put a limit on it. I think down at the bottom, I think we put, had two cubic yards limit for the bulk. If we can get it into the truck with the team we have on the truck, we're gonna get it. It's just for those very specific items that are listening. Anything with, hey, it's gotta have a sticker on it, come by and we'll get that, that doesn't need to go in the truck, hey, we got a mattress.
That's, and that one's across the board. Um, and, and Sonny, listen, I, I wanna tell you, I appreciate what has changed. However, it's, and I know it's, I don't expect perfection, but I do expect whenever, whenever people come down here multiple times and tell me how good your service is and how, how cohesive everything is now. Okay, I do expect homes to not get missed and four days ago, um, I actually know this lady, or my wife knows her, I don't know her that well. Uh, she puts on Facebook, can someone tell me what's going on with Silsby trash? It has been coming on Wednesdays for months now, my trash is completely full after my son's birthday, did they change, did I miss something? And then, anyway, there's a few comments, somebody else got missed every other time, uh, on, that lives near her as well. Um, that chimed in later. Okay, the day after you guys were here the last time was, uh, it was, y'all were here on Monday, not the Thursday meeting, but the Monday before. Stuff fell out of my can, my can, in my house, all over the street, and I'm not saying I get special treatment, I don't want special treatment, I, I don't want anybody to know where I live. You know, just so I see what really happens. And there was debris, we'll just say that. Some water bottle and some paper and stuff that fell out and I'm like, man, I got out, picked it up, threw it in the van and I didn't call anybody, I just don't know how many times, like, if you can't take care of the small things, how can we expect you to take care of the big things, kinda thing? We dealt with heartburn, I'll just use that as a gen, a real easy term, we dealt with heartburn from Lavo for a year, to put it nicely. A year, man, and we called and we complained and we had, and then whenever it comes time, we sent a letter. This entire council, except for Kurt wasn't in yet and, uh, Bruce wasn't in here, up here yet, but the other two that were here, the entire council voted to send you guys a letter saying, hey, guess what, we're not renewing. When it comes up in November, we're not gonna renew with you guys. Okay, that was on purpose. I think, I even brought up the question, I don't think I know, I brought up, I said, why would we send them a letter and tell them? It could, what if it got worse? Well, it was at that point, the communication wasn't there, I know you're saying, you, you guys fixed it, you made some adjustments, I can appreciate that, but golly, man, it took a long time. And then what if this gentleman, you know, so he is a manager, he's what, your site manager, Mr. Nathan?
Yes.
Okay, how many other managers do you have up there at that branch?
We've got two supervisors, they're management.
And I'm just, I'm concerned that if he didn't like to deal with something at that branch and he decides to, you know, head off for greener pastures, now you're back in a worse situation. Okay, or what if things are going smooth and you, and upper management decides, I don't wanna pay this cat what he's worth anymore? I got this guy that I think can handle it for, you know, ten bucks cheaper an hour or whatever. A thousand bucks less a month, so there's just a lot of unknowns that's there me, cause I'm not reliving that.
Let me ask you this. What you're saying, in fact, it happens. I've been in the corporate world for a long time, I've seen that everything that could possibly happen, happen. But what, do you think this is just gonna be our company that does this kinda thing?
Uh, yes, uh, pretty much, and, and from what I've, from what I've heard and a lot of the other towns that I've talked to, uh, not the only one, so don't, I don't wanna speak in absolutes here. Okay, but keep in mind, man, I don't know who made this decision over, if it was at y'all's branch or higher up, but it had to have something to do with y'all's branch because they threatened to sue us.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
No, I was involved with that, we did not threaten to sue anybody.
Okay, alright. So the way it was handled was, was interesting though.
Well, the way it was.
It certainly, everybody thought it looked like, you know, huh, they're threatening us. Whether it was sue or not, they're threatening us, so I'm not interested in that kinda relationship, but that's just me and I was one of them.
Well, like I said, we're here, we all have, we have between fifty five and sixty people that are here, work for us. They're a long time and we're gonna continue to stay here. Uh, I think we've got our trash, the situation cleared up, uh, we're picking up the garbage, uh, that may be one or two, we picked up twenty four, twenty five hundred houses. If one calls, there's something we need to get out, take care of it, which the, uh, supervisors, Nathan decided, he takes care of it. I delivered carts in, so, you know, we, we're doing everything that's on his hands and continuing to fulfill the service. We, we want it, we priced it right, we've done a lot of different things within the company to make sure we can do it. We wanna be here. People that work for us wanna be here. So. Any other questions? Thank you, we appreciate the business.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. Now then, our third guest, and she's already spoke, we'll let her, can take floor again, answer any questions we might have. Debbie Smart, and she was native sanitation.
I was gonna tell y'all, one minute the bulk, bulk items, either way, the current cities I service right now, we do it separately and it's been very successful with the cities. We don't mind picking them up by the road and doing it for one price, the price that I put in there, that's why I think everybody misunderstood what I said, but I had a lower price that we would be separate for the bulk items, you know, we do it separately, then I had a price for the cart where we had a bulk items included. And, uh, either way, y'all want to, I just signed up another city a few weeks back and they're gonna do it the other way where it's gonna be separate, they want me to handle that one in their city as well. So everybody has different ideas, I probably want their bulk items handled. It just, it was successful with my first city I got it, which was China. They had a problem with everybody putting bulk items out, they didn't like it, so they asked me to come up with a plan, so I did. What we do there is, we only pick up what's inside the trash can, and if they have something extra, they call and we make arrangements and then I'll fit it out to like, to the pickup day. Which it worked very well there and then the next three cities it worked well there too. But I understand y'all might be a little bit different, if y'all wanna pick up the bulk items on the pickup day, I'm fine with that. Price I gave y'all, not with additional charges, but for, you look at my proposal, you want to look at it, I have to look at it too. Go through, um, the worksheets in the back. You look at, uh, let's see, it's item A, it's number one. That's the race we charge for like the, the carts with the bulk item. And then the other price I gave you on the beginning part was just for the bulk, you know, just for the cart only.
Sure, page number.
I didn't understand how y'all wanted that.
Well, don't need to pay.
I borrowed them off everybody's books that I turned in, but anyways, the first, the first one I gave y'all was doing the bulk items separately and charging separately. And then you go back there where the worksheet is, your pets fill out. I gave y'all a price there and then the bulk items included in that price. So I can do it either way y'all want to, and we can also experiment. So I have to do it either way y'all want to. And we can also experiment with it as well. We then work one way, you can do it the other way.
Really? Well, I, I'm sorry. Whatever you say, experimenting with something, I don't, and I, and I know what you're saying, because I understand and I. You gotta, you gotta be able to dust, dive and dodge, you know, but at the same time, I'm not interested in that. The. Where'd it go? Okay. Uh, well, I, I didn't, there's no page number, so I was, I got lost, I got lost twice. Um. Whenever it says, this is the part that got, I was like, man, I can't, I can't, I, I had to quit looking at it because everything said depending on size, on all these different. Things. And so whenever it says depending on size, it's like you give me a price and then it says depending on size. So we're pretty much wide open. And that wasn't very like. I guess we're looking for specifics and I know as Sunny mentioned, when you talk specifics, you know, they're talking about cutting up limbs in four foot sections and tying them up with this many pieces of twine and. It can't weigh more than that and all this other, and it, the world doesn't work that way. I get it, but we have to have some kind of standard, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so. That's why I say, okay, you're gonna pick up a washer or dryer for five bucks and then it says depending on size.
Yeah, well, see, that's why, that's why I was explaining to y'all and I interpreted it differently. So when you go to that where it says the one cart and it's the weekly service and the price per month, that's including the bulk items. That's what I understood. And maybe I totally misunderstood it, but that's what I understood.
So why?
Do you want me to come up there and show you?
Maybe.
That's, that's what I interpret. That's how I did it. Okay, see, look.
Show me what you showed me.
See, this is what I was thinking. This was the price I added to the bulk items. So long, so reasonable, remember, I don't come up and tell you aren't your garbage, Jack. This is what it was, this is not. That's would not for bulk items. Okay? That's the way I interpreted this.
So you're telling me.
I'm afraid that it's a rule, right? To include your bulk items. Cause not everybody has bulk items. And I just thought, sometimes you make, so this is without bulk items.
Okay.
This is for bulk items.
Okay. So then what's the other scale right here?
If y'all were want me to keep them separated, if I wanted, if you want me to bill the customers individually, that's what I do in other cities. I have four cities I need to add in and I just added a fifth one on, which I'm.
I got a fun question for that. So if somebody, let's say a customer puts out a bulk item, they put out a washing machine. And you guys pick it up, right? Cause it's out there and that's what y'all do. You pick it up and then you bill the customer directly if you go that route. Or if the city goes that route. You bill that, that address, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what happens if they don't pay it?
Well, usually what I do, this is what I've done in the other four cities. I have done it in advance. They usually send us a picture and I make arrangements with them and I get a credit card and I charge them. If there is a charge, sometimes I'll help charge them. It is small, I'll help charge them.
Right.
So I mean, I'm, I'm very open to helping the city with whatever they need, but the cities I service currently, that's what we do. And they don't have all the bulk items out by the road anymore.
Well, hold on, so, so do you charge them ahead of time or do you do it afterwards? Okay, that's why I was.
Yeah, they contact me and they say, hey, I, I live at this address. This is what I have. And I said, send me a picture, a single picture. I said, okay. Can we get it on such and such thing? Give you a credit card, give you a credit card, charge it, we're done. And it's been fine. I mean, that does work. Either way, it's fine with me.
No, I, I understand. You, you made that crystal clear. At the same time. Do people, my concern here is that we've been trying to get. More curb appeal here in town. We'll just go there with it. Trying to clean things up. It looks rough in, in some spots, right? And I've seen some, some, uh, improvements since we started bringing this up, so it's good. How many times do you have, I mean, this is just gonna be you being honest with me here. How many times have people put stuff out, didn't get picked up and they just left it there? And whether it be their fault because they didn't pay you or they just hung up the phone when you asked for the card number, you know, uh, or whatever. Cause that's what I'm concerned with this.
When we first started the cities, it, it took us a few weeks to get that straight, but once we got packed that, past that, it was coming. And I mean, it's, it's actually very interesting. The cities that I service have been very supportive. And they, they taught me that it worked out well and they're glad we did that, because they were kind of concerned just like you are, because we did the bulk items when I was at Piney Woods as well. I just was trying something different because people always want us to finish the route by a certain time. They want us out of there. You know, and I get that, but sometimes if you get a houses and everybody has so many bulk items, it's kind of hard to engage that. And that brings me to another thing I like to tell the city that. When I remember, we always did the city in three days a week and service, is that correct? Monday, Wednesday and Friday on residential. But also it was, I was gonna say, I would want, I had been to do it four days a week and that way, you know, we're picking up fewer homes on those days and we give. More attentive service.
Right.
That way we're out in the city early, putting it up. So, you know, thing everybody wants, somebody wants to make pictures of garbage at dark, you know, and we don't wanna be out there doing that either.
I've been here since two thousand nine and garbage day has always been Tuesday on my street.
Well, I'm saying, I, I, I know Wednesday's route is a big route and I just thought about it and I'm like, you know, I'd rather break it down. So I just figured it'd go in four days a week. I thought that would be helpful.
It could be. What's the biggest concern that y'all know of? And this can come from either side of this bench. What, what's the biggest concern with the? Garbage pickup later in the day? Is there a certain time of day that you know that people don't want you, your trucks out?
You don't wanna be out after dark. You know, you don't wanna be out after six o'clock at night. I mean, your goal is to get out there in the morning, get the garbage picked up and be on your way to the landfill in the afternoon. I'm just saying, that's just how I think about it, because all kinds of things can happen. You can get a flat tire, you can have, have it all leave on the truck you gotta fix and it delays you for a little bit, then you wind up being out longer. So my thoughts were. Let's be smart about, let's provide the route that's more even during the day.
Yeah, no, 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 I got that. I just didn't know if there was a reason that, that people say, oh, we want you off the street by this time because of, and then I wanna know what the.
Kids at night, stuff like that. It's just better, better to be out, not after dark, that's for sure. And another thing I want to say is that we are a locally owned family business. We are not owned by a capital company. Our owners are all right here in town. We all live at our office. Four of them. I don't know if y'all do that in our company.
Anybody else have any other questions for Kathy? Thank you for, thank you for coming back. Okay.
So we're on item four, it's a discussion of possible action, right?
I would like to get this resolved and go get one more item and then go back to the other thing if we can.
Get what resolved? Oh, sorry, you were about to say, it's not working. So you have another person who's gonna speak?
No, I don't think we have anybody else here to speak. Do we have anybody else here to speak? I'm not aware of. Okay. Which one? You came in just a little bit late and you probably didn't get some of those forms.
She said she wasn't.
She wasn't here to speak.
She was only here.
She's here, she's here, we had a question.
Thomas, do you have any questions for waste management?
All right.
I'm making a motion that we table awarding the sanitation contract.
I see it.
What, what, what's the purpose you all want?
Tableting it because. The recommendation that was given before was before these folks got to get up and. Talked to us a little bit and we had some more time to really absorb what was in here and how's things gonna do unless, uh. You had another motion. It'd be real nice if we could discuss this.
Well, I don't have a problem discussing. I, I don't. I mean, based on what I, what I already heard, though, I'm, my mind's already made up. I can't pick on nobody else.
What we have is a motion on the floor to table it and we have a second. Then we need to vote on that motion. And if anybody make contact with Bruce.
Uh, that's one of the biggest reasons why I want to table it. Is because we don't have everybody on council right now. It's out of town. He just told me, he let me know that he was not gonna be able to make this meeting.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem changing if we trying to table it for Bruce, but I'm telling you, my mind already makes where I'm going. I'm, I'm staying with the same votes I made.
Sure. Okay, let's, let's go ahead and vote and if, if three people vote to table it, we'll table it. If they don't. Then, uh, we'll wait for another motion.
Danny, you, did you have a pick with Bruce?
I did, I think.
I spoke with Bruce. Bruce did have a concern about the buck, so what was his, what, what did he say to you?
He wanted to table it.
He was on the committee. And he was pretty deep into it. And he was disappointed. He wasn't able to make that fast meeting. I don't know. I didn't ask him when he'd be back, but I'm assuming it wouldn't be long. You know?
I don't have a problem. Like I said, I don't have a problem changing it, you know? I mean, that's what we need to do, Bruce get back, but. Like I said, I don't mind going on record right now. I mean, based on where I'm at right now, I just stand up what I said. All I'm asking is just like I said last meeting, is for Solomon to make sure he got that contract the way, the way it need, the way it need to be.
Okay, all in favor of table it? Raise your hand.
I don't like that.
Okay. Did you announce they want to table?
So Paul made a motion, Kurt seconded it.
Kurt's.
Now, here's my other idea. I, I'm, I'm only maybe the most to table it. So whenever we get ready to come back up with the other situation that we, you know, have a meeting about with the guy. Kurt was talking about a while ago, we put it on that same, same, same meeting. Cause I don't want to keep dragging this on, let's just be over with.
But you said in the table so he could be a part of.
Yeah.
I'll do that.
Okay. All right, so the motion carries to table. All right, now I'd like to take care of one more item before we. Everybody voting to table. Okay. Item five, the discussion of possible action on resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-two. Resolution of the city council of the city of Silsby Texas authorizing an agreement for the temporary closure of a state right of way for the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five Silsby Homecoming Parade.
I make the motion, we make a resolution, city Silsby to close the authorized agreement. Temporary closure, state highway, right away through two thousand twenty-five Silsby Homecoming Parade.
I second that.
Okay, do you have anything to say about it, Dan?
No, sir, all the attachments are with it and I hope that.
What road will we close?
Highway nine.
The, the one that we have to go through text talk to get approval to close, ninety-two.
Wait a minute.
Ninety-two, ninety-six.
History, history.
I second that.
I mean, did you do the level text up?
Well, that's what this is. They require the resolution and the letter and all the routes and it's all attached to this resolution in your package.
So we got some deals we can do and some we can't.
This was for the Homecoming Parade.
I'm gonna tell you something. Uh, we had a meeting here a while back, which I'm a little slow for y'all, probably with you sometimes. All right. But I, I, I won't bless them for it here. But I thought we was talking about one time that said we can't do it somewhere at all.
They never, they never.
Uh, it was, they were talking about all the insurance we had to pay for.
Well, because y'all requested if the entities wanted them, they had to provide their own insurance and they did. They have a certificate, the E S D number six did his certificate of insurance. They do the Christmas parade as well. And then when Cruises Hills becomes theirs, they provide their own certificate of insurance. So the city's not liable. But text talk will not close it without the city doing the resolution.
So the insurance issue we don't want.
It, it, it one time, correct? Yes, sir.
E S D.
Yeah, they paid for two of them and then, um, Cruises Hills we paid for their own.
I know I won't bother understanding, okay? I know what I was doing.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Okay, that passes.
We have to raise our hands like that, huh?
Yeah, we have to suspend this meeting. Do we need a motion to suspend this meeting? No, no. Let's suspend this meeting and go back to our. E D C meeting, but first, what time is it? But it is.
Seven twenty-two.
Seven twenty-two. Okay. Do we have anybody that's arrived that wants to speak to this issue of, uh. This economic development project? Anybody here who'd like to speak to that? Okay.
Close the public hearing.
Okay, we wanna close this. Here, public hearing. Do we have a motion to close this?
You don't need a motion, just close it.
Just close it. Okay, that's closed. Now we wanna return to our Economic Development Corporation meeting.
Yeah, you need to, you need to open it.
Okay, we've never opened it. It's pretty confusing. When you're old and senile. Okay. We. Need to have a roll call, call the order for the. No, you guys do this before we finish this hell a bit. I'm sorry, but we have to prove this before we can vote on it in the council meeting. All right?
Secretary Paul Davis here.
Board member Bruce Kaye, President Danny Renault.
Here.
Board member Thomas Stoll.
Yeah.
Board member Kurt Woodard. Vice President Will G. Best.
Yeah.
Okay, we're just getting the pledge and the invocation. Do we have any visitors here for this meeting? Okay. Okay, now then, discussion of possible action on approving the minutes for the July twenty-eighth, uh, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Hi, motion to approve the minutes?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on it? All in favor? Both? Okay. Discussion of possible action on approving the expenditure financials for the month of July.
I make a question, we print the entry report month of July.
We got a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Any discussion on it? All in favor? Both? All right, it passes. The director's report.
Uh, all contracts or agreements are the same with the exception of, uh, Silsby Seafood. They actually shut the doors.
So all that.
And you know, E D C, it gave them some fines. So we'll have to look at that and see.
Is it the same?
Can be done. And then have you heard anything from Mike?
I have, I, I've got the, the lawsuit ready to file on them.
Dan, is it the same, is it the same people run, that were running Silsby Seafood that started it?
Was the same owner, but I think he leased it maybe to somebody, but he still gave.
But he's the one that's accountable. It wasn't transferable. It wasn't transferable, was it? You transferred that over to someone else? Okay, just curious.
We'll look into it. They just now shut it and see. You know, it looked like they were doing pretty good.
I didn't see a place dead at all.
There was a lot of bulk from the crawfish, I think.
There was a lot of bulk from the crawfish, I think they sold a lot of that, but I guess it just wasn't enough business during the daytime to keep them going.
So our time, so our time.
Somebody said to one in Lumberton, I guess they had one in Lumberton, sure that it did the same thing.
Okay, item seven. Point number one, is discussion and possible action on resolution number twenty-five dash oh-two, a resolution of the board directors of the Silvie Economic Development Corporation authorizing providing financial assistance to Worthy Enterprises LLC in the total amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Authorizing the execution of a performance agreement setting out the terms of that financial assistance and recognizing that the legal requirement for provision of such financial assistance have been observed. Do you have anything to say about this, Director?
No, sir, uh, other than you'll, you'll keep in mind, you were only giving them a hundred and fifty-seven, a hundred and fifty-something in this budget year and you're going to roll it over to, to the next budget year, so you weren't giving them to them, to them at all at one time and you weren't completing all your funds, you know, for other businesses.
Be a hundred and
Pick yourself.
Hundred and eighty-eight, three forty-five by the next one.
I think it was a hundred and maybe forties.
Well, you said one fifty out of the first one, right?
Yeah.
So three thirty-eight, three forty-five minus one fifty is.
Yeah, we had the exact amount written out in the last meeting when y'all voted on it, the exact amount.
Well, I made, I made the movement. And we approved the agreement.
It's in the mission.
Before we approve the agreement though, um, so right now it's written, he's not personally responsible and the reason that I did that is because Worthy Enterprises has a couple of other businesses, so I'm not entirely concerned about if, if this business fails, like there's other assets that we can go after with Worthy Enterprises, in a lot of the cases, we would personally make the, the grantor guarantee, or the, the grantee guarantee that he was, like, we would get a personal guarantee from them like we did with a couple of the others, but I, I didn't do that in this case because there are other businesses, so there are assets to go after and there's land to go after and other things, I mean, I, I wanted to talk to you about that, just how, basically how you feel about it, I mean, because like I said, there are other businesses.
I knew that and going into it, like, and they come up here and talk, we know all to you, who, what and.
Yeah.
Are there other managers or just him?
There's one other manager. It's a manager managed LLC, so he has, as the single manager, he has, he's authorized to sign for the, for the, the D L C.
Or shouldn't it be managing, managing member, not just?
No, it, no, because it's a manager managed, it's not a member managed, so, so because it's manager managed, his title is manager, not managing member.
Okay.
But if y'all look at your minutes, uh, that y'all approved, it was uh, one forty-four, eight twenty-four.
Okay.
Left in this funding cycle and the difference of one ninety-three, five twenty-one won't be given until next year or to the new budget.
That's a more familiar, yeah.
Okay, well, since we done the discussion perfect, I'm still ready to make the motion.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, is there any discussion on it? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Josh, you're here representing him, do you want to say anything?
Again, uh, I'll say thank you all, we're excited to get started filing, we're uh, maybe our contractor applied for permitting, should be getting it here in the next few days. They told me today, we're gonna be start living some dirt around over there and um, should break ground in early September, place be open uh, sometime in the spring, so again, we're, we're excited, we're, you know, I'm glad you are, y'all are all excited and that we have your, your faith and your support and that, it means everything to us, so. Yeah, just thank you.
You got the do, the dozer's over there already.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, do we have a, any discussion about items not on the agenda specifically limited to proposals that are subject to be placed, placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting? Anybody have anything? Okay. Do we have any reason for an executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I uh, if we have a motion, we'll adjourn this meeting then.
Motion, we adjourn, you see me?
Thank you.
Alright. Now we'll go back to the city council.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, I'm trying to get us done.
Yeah.
Any move tonight?
Back to the
Okay, what time are we on?
We're on number six.
Six.
Okay, so now we have to have the first reading of what we just did. We call this meetings, but the city council will back the order, okay?
At seven thirty-three.
It is seven thirty-five, is that right?
Seven thirty-three.
Seven thirty-three. Okay, item six, discussion and possible action on resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-three. A resolution of the city council of the city of Silvie, Texas authorizing that the Silvie Economic Development Corporation provide financial assistance to Worthy Enterprises LLC in the amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Authorizing the execution of a performance agreement setting out the terms of that financial assistance and recognizing that the legal requirement for provision of such financial assistance have been observed. This is the first reading.
I'm messing, I make a motion that will approve this as uh, so, Solomon, if, if we are not able to do this, can we waive this?
Yeah, you can on this one.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion on it?
Put it on the next special meeting.
That's fine.
Okay, who's the, who's that committed?
Paul did. Okay. This is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? Okay. Item seven, discussion of possible action on utilizing funds from special water and sewer improvement fund in the amount of twelve hundred and thirty-six dollars and ten cents to Biscap Electric for motor for Twenty-first Street Lift Station, Roger.
We just had a failure on Twenty-first Street Lift Station on Friday morning. We had to get it hot shotted, that's why the difference is between number seven and number eight. Because it is a delivery charger, we had two motors go down on Twenty-first Street and we just had to get them replaced.
But you got two motors in the Twenty-first.
Two motors inside the Twenty-first Street Lift Station.
Same one, same location.
Same one. But one of, one of was running, then we happened to order them from from Drati from industrials. We ordered, glad we did because after you got another one running, that one went down, so we had to replace both of them.
Yeah, there's seven and eight.
We have a spare one. Do we have a spare part? No, do not. We don't have any backup.
Now, I thought that we, we had taken some older motors and gotten rewired, or maybe, maybe that was something else, no, that was some meters, I'm sorry, that was some meters that we were having rebuilt.
Do we have to vote on these individually, or can we vote on seven and eight together?
If they're the same
Same.
Lift station, you can do them together. I, I agree, number eight allowed, like you did number seven now.
Okay, discussion and possible action on utilizing funds from special water and sewer improvement fund in the amount of one thousand dollars to industrial equipment for Twenty-first Street Lift Station. So we're gonna vote on both of them at the same time, do we have a motion to vote on?
I make a motion that we uh, approve using the funds from the special water and sewer improvement fund in the amount of twelve hundred and thirty-six dollars and ten cents to Biscap Electric for the burn of Twenty-first Street Lift Station and utilizing funds from special water and sewer improvement fund for the amount of one thousand dollars to industrial equipment for Twenty-first Street Lift Station.
I second what you just said.
See? Well, is there any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is the motion carries? Nine. Discussion of possible action on utilizing funds from special water and sewer improvement fund in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars to Hon Equipment Company Inc. For the Lackey Road Lift Station, Roger.
Same thing, we had a mo, a motor failure there, that's the bigger lift station, has the bigger motors in it. Um, also, number ten, due to that, our back stars not made it here yet, we don't have a back star to clean it out, we had a tire G-force to come in and pump everything out of the lift station so we can repair it and get the new motor put in.
That's been repaired though, huh? Everything's back and all?
Yeah, everything's back and all, yeah.
So this is the bill here.
It's a bigger, bigger.
It's pointing seven hundred dollars for one motor.
Yeah, that's a different location.
Lift station.
One of them's Lackey Road and the other one says Happy Kid.
That's the same, Lackey Road, that's where the, that's where.
Well, the way it's worded.
That's where it's at.
It says lift station by Happy Kid, the other one says.
That's, that's the site, that's where the lift station is at, actually.
Okay, didn't have that.
Okay. Let's vote on that and then we'll read it in, total ten. Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve. Utilizing funds from special water to improvement fund in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars to Hon Equipment Company Inc. In for Lackey Road Lift Station.
I second that.
Alright, is there any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item ten, discussion and possible action on utilizing funds from special water and sewer improvement fund in the amount of one thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars to G-force sewer services for lift station by Happy Kid. Roger, aren't discussed that?
Motion we approve. Discussion and possible action on utilizing funds from special water and sewer improvement fund in amount of one thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars and G-force sewer system for lift station at Happy Kid.
I second that, Bruce.
Do we got a motion in a second, any discussion on it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Get motion carries. Okay. Discussion is possible. Discussion about items not on the agenda specifically limited to proposals that are subject to be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
I got two.
You got two?
Yes.
Go ahead.
One of them, uh, the station at Hawthorne Mall.
It's Felix.
Huh?
It's Felix. We put this over in Hawthorne Mall. Well, the budget year, we're gonna see how much it costs to re, to rehab it.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, talking about.
Rehab it.
Talking about completely rehab.
Yeah, rehab, yeah.
It's, it's been, it's quiet now.
Yeah.
But, but, have you seen it?
Uh-uh.
Needs to be changed, it's, it's bad shape.
Does it look, does it look bad or is it like tore up?
No, it's just, it's open.
It's tore up, both of them, yeah.
You still want it on the next agenda?
Uh, no, definitely not. Long as they don't take the two, you're getting done.
So what's the other one?
We need to rehab it, yeah.
Alright, the other one? I'm tired of looking at that water pump. Was that water company running?
Well, we got.
What did y'all ever come up with? We had asked y'all one time before that the people that installed that to act in the ten hour meeting. What else happened to that?
They're not coming out, they're putting us off.
Huh?
They're coming, they're not coming out looking at, they're putting us off.
How much, how much warranty?
Splash pad?
How much warranty did we have on that?
I don't know, that question's supposed to be, supposed to be here City Hall a while, I don't know what I do.
I wish we could find, I need to, I need that.
Should be hard to find, I thought it was two years.
Because we start having a problem on it within months of installing it.
We got video.
And the man never showed up.
We got video of it when it started messing up.
Was it, was it vandalized or was it just equipment tore up?
It just, like the way it's put together, I've got, I've got a quote, she said, from Crafton, we did the train set, they're well-known for water about fifty thousand dollars to bust up the concrete to fix the problem, but we got a pipe busted. That's why some of the features don't work. Washing out the sides.
Wait a minute.
Plus the time.
Well, what's on the paper?
They're saying Splash pad USA saying, well, was the property shut down? Well, yes, property shut down, it was property shut down, during the wear time. We don't know if it's a train vibration has missed, has caused a pipe to burst, we don't know that.
Well, I'm gonna be honest with y'all, y'all think about it, we all first got it put in there. I located the flash splash pad, but I kept telling y'all about the location.
Yeah.
Now, if that splash pad is that close to the train.
It's gonna get my.
Come in my house and you'll see a busted wall in, in my living room.
I agree with you, I'm 100% with that, that reason, yeah.
I mean, and I'm away from the train.
Yeah.
And everybody down in MLK got the same problem I got.
Law vibration goes through there, that's exactly right. Law train go by that place, exactly right. But we don't know until we get it busted out.
Ain't no such thing as rain chalk can see that.
Yeah.
But if they don't honor it, we won't have a choice but to put it in this new budget, so he's trying to get a little.
I, I also gotta make sure we get something done with it.
We are, we're working on it.
The water running all day long every day.
We're working, do timer system and everything, I got a quote for a new timer. As just one controller on it, not four controllers on it. Moving the pad, moving the, the touchpad closer to the fence, so the kids can't run around it and hit it all the time.
Right now, we got it shut down?
Sir?
Is it shut down?
No, I said, we're letting it run, yeah, but it's, all the, all the fixtures doesn't turn off, some keep running until. Yeah.
So this is water running right now?
Yeah.
Well, they turn it, yeah, they turn it off.
We go out, we turn it off every night.
Okay.
It's like open eight to eight and we turn it off.
How much water are we just letting run, maybe? Because this is, here's the issue I have with that, if that was someone's house.
The whole summer.
It costs them a ton of.
The whole summer, we probably have two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water goes.
Okay, so if I were to turn my faucet on tomorrow and I say I had a busted pipe on my end or something, right? My water would be running continuously from eight AM to eight PM
Yeah.
for ninety days of summer, how much money you think that would cost me?
Eight hundred dollars.
That's what we're doing?
No, let me tell you, it's gonna be more than that because I have one toilet running in my house for a month. Three hundred and forty-six dollars.
Which means it's, it's okay for the city to do that, if someone happens to own a house, they got paid for it.
Yeah.
That's the issue I have right now.
Right.
We're working on getting, getting it repaired, we're getting votes, have it for the next budget year.
You know, how long has it been in there?
A while.
How long has it been open?
How many years?
Three years.
Has it been three?
Three years.
Okay. That pad have been a problem the whole time it's been there.
To get going, you're right.
So we never get any service work on that, do we?
No.
Warranty work.
What would it be, what would it cost us just to eat it and tear it down? Like seriously? Like, I mean. Besides bad parents, you know, or whatnot, I mean, if the juice not worth the squeeze here, I mean, we got to look at this from a leadership standpoint now, we're gonna put fifty thousand dollars into fixing a busted pipe on a, on a splash pad? We could invest that fifty thousand dollars in doing something way better for our kids.
Well.
I mean, I'm all about having spots for our children to play, I'm also do, about doing it responsibly, where it's not gonna cost us an arm and a leg to do, you know, like.
You probably, you probably, you probably, you probably, uh, you probably need to get a porch rent to help cover some of your costs. Alright, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Do you think we can get a fourth rent to help cover some of that cost?
I can check into it, I.
It's considered.
I've never known one that pays for fixing something, it's usually for something new, something that you're building or adding.
Or Saul, you say, they say we can't get the guy here, he not show up, but why can't you sue him? Him show up, like, still that, they, they can pay for it, you know?
No, we're not trying to get him to fix something. He said something about rewriting some stuff on it. So you change it up.
Well, we're gonna talk about that in the upcoming meeting, I think, because that's what this whole conversation was about.
Yeah, okay.
I just don't know what they'll do for something.
All right, well, put, put that on y'all, just to check on if I, they can be.
Okay, I have one other item that I need to ask Saul about, and I don't know whether you wanna do it now, put it on the agenda for next meeting, or what? That has to do with, uh, uh, the R F D for this, uh, I've had a question the whole time we've been discussing this, this sewer project, is whether do we have to put a request for bids in for, uh, for the engineering companies to bid on who's gonna take care of this thing, or do we not? There you go. There's been some confusion in.
Depends on what the project is. You have to, you have to decide if you're gonna do a full project, or what you're gonna do. You have to, if you're gonna do the, if, if you're going to go out and actually have a comprehensive plan and figure out what the city of Silbey needs, then yes, you need, you need to have an R F P and figure it out. Like, you need to get an engineer to figure out what the scope of the project is and, and all of that.
Well, we did, we do have an engineer that's working on it, but we don't, we did never bid it out or anything.
We need to do R F P.
Yeah, but do we even, I mean, what, what is the engineer working?
Monitoring the I and I.
See, it's, it's.
But there's, here's, here's the thing, the technology is brand new, so there's, and it's patented and all this stuff, and as far as I know, you know, you got one source that has it, and they're working with that source.
So it's, you don't do R F Ps for engineers anyway, you do R F Qs, or requests or qualifications, so if only one engineer has the qualifications to do it.
Then that's who gets it.
Then you're, you, when you do the request for qualifications, it's gonna be a real easy R F Q.
Yeah.
What about the other piece, though? That's, that's just for the.
The monitor.
Monitoring, right, not for the fixing of the, the.
Yeah, well, once you, once you figure out what the problem is, then we, then we tackle that one.
But.
Cause, I mean, I have, you know, I know engineers around this area that would one hundred percent like to come in and look, and give us, give us a quick.
But you don't even know what the project is yet, that's.
Right, you don't know the project until the, until the issues.
Roger, can you talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, we're, it's just a planning stages of, they brought us, they come to us with this monitor system. L J, they come with this brand new monitor system, it's been patented six months ago, that you can stick your man hose and tell your flows and all that.
So I, I, that's, that's another thing I have with that, I guess, is like, this is not, why isn't it used anywhere else? It's so awesome, it's so cool. Why Silbey, small town Texas, gotta be the test bed? Tell them, say, and it's so.
Well, he has it in different cities, but he was in Houston, and they're just happened to fold him, president of the company, to come to Silbey and give us the administration.
So why don't we put it on the agenda for the next meeting to, to talk about putting in an R F Q, and, I mean, because that's, we talk about doing stuff, but we don't actually ever get the first step done of doing the R F Q to start the plan.
All right, Thomas, you said you had two things, and I only heard one.
He just.
Oh, okay.
I just still want to get halfway through this thing and find out if we need to do something different.
Yeah, you have to plan for, like, you actually have to figure out what, what the project is, because none of us are an engineer.
Amazing.
Well, that's why I was asking, I'm not a lawyer either. Okay, all right, I think we've.
Do everything for executive.
Do we have anything for what?
Executive session.
Do we have anything for executive session?
No, sir.
I make a motion we adjourn this meeting.
I second.
We got a motion in a second, any discussion?
Oh, yeah, hold it. Ma, have you got something to say? Huh? Oh, okay.
All right, all in favor?
Ah.